Hey, everybody ready?
I just need one second for the YouTube.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello, Mr. Hancock.
Hello, hello. Be a couple more seconds. We're just making sure that our recording will be connected to YouTube. If not, we could probably always upload it after.
Yeah, let's do that. I'm getting an error message. Thank you, President Rudley.
Do you want to stop recording and try it again? Maybe would that help or that's why?
I don't think so, yeah.
Okay, all right. Great. All right. So I'd like to call to order the Austining Board of Education regular meeting for May 18, 2021, and I will be leading us in the pledge allegiance. So everybody, please stand. Enjoy me in the pledge allegiance and unmute your mic if you can. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome, and I will continue on with our prads and events. And I'd like to thank Ms. Nicole Reese for always keeping us updated and gathering that every board meeting. So thank you, Ms. Reese. All right. So our prads and events for tonight are as follows. The Austining High School, my brother's keeper students planted trees at T-Town last Friday. We've had outdoor music sessions with Mike Risco Music, tricycles movement sessions with Iona College, and much more took place during our Saturday Explore and Learn sessions. Senator Elijah Melnick visited Claremont School last Friday. He met with MBK scholars. He read to the class and he toured our buildings. And I had an opportunity to be there and our students were amazing. And they got to ask many, many very important questions of the senator, and it was a great experience for everybody. The Austining High School presents the Theory of Relativity, their spring musical. This will be the first one since school shut down last year. The performances are at 8:00 PM, May 20 through 20, the 22nd, for a limited general audience. Admissions admissions on a first come, first served basis. And there will also be video streaming of the show, and that will be available May 27 through June 3. The Austining schools are now on TikTok. Follow us at Austining U F S D. Thank you to Ovac Phelps and Westchester County of Health for collaborating with us to vaccinate our students and staff and members last week, and also for Ovac to continuing to also test our community. COVID testing. Thank you to all our new families that attended our Park School meetup. We will also have another session this Saturday at 3:00 PM at the Arthur Jones Park. And Virtual Academy students participated in a hike at T-Town. And as a general reminder, there's continued ongoing COVID testing in Ovac every Monday, Tuesday, and Friday from 10:00 AM to 5:45 PM. And just for the community also to know, we have a school and library budget vote as well as trustee votes for the library and the school. The polls are still open till nine o'clock tonight, and that is being held at the Austining High School gym. So welcome, everybody, and I will turn it over to Dr. Sanchez to introduce our first presentation.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everybody on the screen and those that are want to welcome everyone that's in attendance. I'm going to turn it over actually directly to Mr. Hancock, who's going to introduce our student presentation. And just want to thank Maya for being here in advance. So Mr. Hancock.
Yes, good evening, everybody. So just to kind of before I introduce Maya, I have to say Maya came to me last year in the spring and Mr. Morrison to discuss a proposal for a new club. And it was specifically focused on, you know, curriculum and ensuring that students had voice in the course offerings that we offer here at the high school, which fell nicely in line with, as all of you know, in the fall, when we put out for the first time a survey asking students for feedback about the types of courses that we would be ultimately offering for next school year. So Maya, I give her a tremendous amount of credit from the moment that she met with Mr. Morrison and I to kind of give the proposal. She was well-read, well-researched, did a lot of homework, put together an excellent presentation, which is a small snippet of what you're going to see tonight. And then her work in advocating for an advisor, Ms. Libertino, one of our new teachers this year, jumped on to join the work with Maya and the students, along with the leadership of Mr. Morrison, and created this awesome club and opportunity for students to have voice. And when we talk about being student-centered and what do our students need and the types of courses that they would like to see offered and the why behind it, this is what student-centered instruction, leadership in a school looks like is when you implement ideas like this. And I want to thank Maya for really paving that path for us and coming up with that idea and really making something of it. So I'm excited to introduce her and for her to share tonight. So Maya, take it away.
Thank you so much for your kind words, and it's so nice to meet everyone. I'm Maya Millie. I'm currently a junior at Austining High School, and I'll be presenting to you about SDCC. So I'm going to start on. Oh, it says disabled screen sharing. I don't believe I'm able to yet.
Just give us one second. We're going to take care of it.
You should be all set.
All right. Thank you so much. Are you all able to see my screen?
Yes, we're good.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So as I stated, I'll be presenting to you about Austining's SDCC, also known as Student Driven Curriculum Club. I'm Maya Millie, and I am the founder and president of this club. Like Mr. Hancock said, I met with him in the summer, and we started the development of this amazing project that means so much to me and I think is going to make a lot of change. So to get started, I really want to just kind of do a little simplification of what exactly SDCC is and what we are aiming to achieve. So for various years, countless students in our district and community felt that our curriculum should include courses that aid all students in learning about their history and culture in order to efficiently reflect the diversity of Austining's inclusive student body. In order to create an opportunity for the development of these courses by the students themselves, this club was established, and it aims to allow the Austin High School students to contribute to the development of the curriculum by giving the vital opportunity for our club members to collaborate in order to create new elective and core courses that engage in discourse about including diverse moments in history and marginalized groups into the current curriculum. Our club members accomplish what this club aims to achieve by conducting student body interest surveys to develop inclusive courses that are like SDCC or Student Driven Curriculum Club, will grow and evolve with the ever-changing student body and reflect the Austining School District's needs. So why exactly is our work vital? Why are we doing this? And why should we care about developing a diverse curriculum? What will this do for the Austining High School District, and how will it impact students? So developing a diverse curriculum is essential for countless and various reasons. In Austining, in Austining's case, it's even more profoundly vital since we, as a student body, are incredibly diverse and we kind of pride ourselves on inclusion. We pride ourselves on our diversity and celebrating each other and everyone's contributions. So here are only a few critical reasons listed. I'll go through them very quickly, and I'll try to be as concise and accurate as possible. So by creating and implementing a diverse curriculum, not only are we creating a safe inclusive space for all students to share their ideas, thoughts, and personal experiences on misrepresentation, discrimination, and the importance of inclusion, diversity, and equity. So basically, by creating this club, we're also creating a space. And unfortunately, in a lot of school districts, there isn't this kind of space where students can really talk about this. But in our school, I think we really ensure that we have this space because it's incredibly important. So by developing and implementing a diverse and inclusive curriculum, we're also nurturing a vital feeling for all students known as cultural pride. We are also aiding them in development confidence and self-love for themselves, for their culture, religion, ethnicity, race, and their ancestors' contributions while learning about their history, heritage, and roots. So during even the development of the club and during our club meetings, not only do we talk about things that are really vital for students to let out and kind of explore with their peers, but we're also letting students kind of engage in such an important feeling known as cultural pride because our culture and our ethnicity and our race play a big part of our identity. And without taking pride in our identity and without being represented, you feel very lost and you feel alone. And we really don't want students to have that feeling because it's not only going to impact how they, you know, perform in school, but how they feel in their everyday lives. So by doing this, we're also helping students step out of their comfort zone and gain a deeper understanding of issues facing their peers today and throughout history. So of course, when we talk about serious issues or when we engage in discourse or when we develop these surveys and reach out to other classmates and ask for their opinions and what they would like to see implemented in the curriculum, we're giving students a chance to kind of step out and gain confidence and be able to communicate with their peers better and also gain a more profound understanding of these issues, which I think is really important to know, and I'm sure all of you can agree. We are keeping students engaged and involved in school. That's obviously very important through this club. It will give students another kind of opportunity or kind of a mindset that would get them into school, and it'll be another kind of way that students can find a passion for school and find a passion for something they can do in school. Finally, we're promoting tolerance. There is no better way to teach tolerance than to provide every student with an understanding of how their ancestors' contributions helped shape the world we live in today. I think throughout various years, no matter where diversity or inclusion is shown, there are problems sometimes, and sometimes there's conflicts. And from George Floyd to Breonna Taylor to so many people, there still are these issues. And I feel like tolerance is something that's so important, and that's something that can be taught and brought up through SDCC. So thank you so much for listening. I have SDC's contacts listed, such as our Instagram and Google Classroom code for students. So if any parents are on here, they can share their code with the students, so possibly they can join. I'm also leaving my school email and my advisors, Ms. Libertinos, so you can contact her or me with any questions. Thank you so much for listening.
Wow, wonderful. Wonderful presentation, Maya. Just outstanding and you know, the time in our world and our time in our school and our culture. It's just, you know, you could see all of us smiling, you know, the confidence of our, you know, young students and students to have this thought, to really bring home this ability to say, hey, we need to have a club. We need to really get involved in curriculum. You know, we all, we all have our, you know, issues that we want to solve, but you know, this is a way to make a real impact on your fellow peers, on us, on the community at large. And this should be an example for the rest of the state and country. And I know there's students around the country and the state that are doing this work, and just so proud to have you here, sharing, sharing this vision. And I know this will be very successful. So I wanted to just congratulate you and thank you for this important work and for bringing this to the board and performing the club. So have you, you know, how many students or of your peers are? Have you joined in or have started the club with you, have shown an interest?
Quite a few. We sent out an interest survey earlier this year for joining the club, and we had a lot of positive responses. And so far, we have about, I think, members in the club right now are joined in the classroom about over 17. But there are a lot of other people who we've sent out like another survey for to see if they'd be interested. And we got another kind of stream of really positive responses and more people who are willing to join. Since this is a recently established club, it hasn't been, since we're all online, and there's people going in and out, it hasn't really been able to get the exposure it needs. But we have a lot of students who are interested.
That's great. And I could, I could see this, you know, this club collaborating with the other clubs that have a safe space for students and, you know, and coming, coming back and making your recommendations for curriculum and for other things that are happening in the school. So, so that's wonderful. And I know I want to open up to my colleagues on the board because I know a lot of, a lot of us want to say, you know, say more words. So, so thank you, and I'll, I'll pass it over to my colleagues.
Yeah, yeah, I had to, I had to, you know, show my expression, Maya. Excellent. Well done. I know your mom is super proud of you. She should be. I am. And you spoke about the ancestors, and I actually have one. I'm about making my ancestors proud today. Sure. So I just, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to salute you. That's all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Lemon. All right, Trustee Banta.
Yeah, phenomenal presentation, Maya, and just a phenomenal, just your, your overall outlook on it and the way you are. You just hear the passion in your, in your voice. You had me at ancestors. And I just, so, so it, just the way you're looking at it is just a 360-degree view, and it's so refreshing to see that. And just to think, this is, you know, you are a product of the Austining school system. That's just phenomenal. And your family as well. I want to take the credit from them. But just, I thank you so much for that, and thank you for, for taking on such a huge, huge leadership role. So I guess that would be my only question to you is like, what inspired you? I think we all have that, that aha moment, or most of us have that aha moment where it's like, you know, I need to do this, or I want to do this, or I think I should put my energy into this. What was that for you? What made you want to take on such a huge leadership role?
That's such an amazing question. Thank you. Well, I've always had a passion for equity and equality and making sure that everyone not only feels comfortable but represented. I come from a family of refugees, mainly from the former Soviet Union. And I've seen so many people in my family and so many friends struggle and feel so lost and alone because they don't feel like they're represented, not only within school but in the outside world. And it hurts my heart because not only do I love them and they're close to me, but it just shows how, as America, we're a big melting pot. And it's so important that we respect each other in order to make sure that we all become a contributive society. So I feel like the moment where it hit me where I was like, okay, I need to do something, was probably that moment after I attended this seminar somewhere for National JSA, and this refugee spoke, and she was from Rwanda. And she sat there and said, I've never felt so alone when I went to school for the first time in America and realized that they never talked about me. You know, I sat there in class and they talked about the same people, and I just felt so alone. And I don't really know what that's like, but when I heard that, I kind of put myself in that mindset, and I was just like, I cannot imagine. I cannot imagine sitting there and feeling like, you know, I'm not represented. Like, my mother works so hard, and my father works so hard, and their ancestors worked so hard to bring them where they are today, and they get no credit whatsoever and no acknowledgement. And I just can't imagine putting myself in those shoes. So I feel like once I heard or said that, I was like, okay, I have to stop scrolling through Instagram and saying, oh, you know, I hope someone fixes that. You know, I can't continue to sit here and say, oh, well, you know, maybe someone else will take care of it. It's fine. It's fine. Like, we're gonna do good things. It's fine. Like, I couldn't really do that anymore. I knew I needed to be that person. I feel like we all have that potential. So I kind of took life by the reins and made sure that I could make the change that needed to be implemented.
Thank you. Thank you. And great job once again. Phenomenal.
Okay. Trustee. Trustee Gayle.
Sure. Just thank you. I remember Stephen giving us, giving us an update that you were meeting. And I'm guessing you had no shot at not going along with your presentation there. So thank you. I, you know, I would suggest you come back to any, you know, if you need anything from this board, I think you have an open invitation and a warm reception. So, you know, keep it, be great to get updates. Keep doing what you're doing. I know you're just starting this club. It made me think, I was just at another district sporting event this afternoon. I mean, the other districts, as you have energy and motivation, that would, I think, love, I think, Ms. Rudley's comment, and others who could really benefit from hearing what you're doing. I'm sure there are venues that I would love to hear as you learn and grow. So thank you.
Trustee Spring.
Thank you. Thank you for not only the presentation, but also all the hard work that you're doing. Your, your presentation skills are awesome. They really are. Phenomenal speaker. And I love the fact that you hit on in your, your answer to Trustee Banta, not just to be an activist on social media, but to actually take that into your, your words and turn them into actions. And seeing that come to fruition is awesome. So it sounds like you not only talk the talk, you walk the walk. Excellent job. And as, as Trustee Galif said, you know, anything the board can do to support you, you, you have an open invitation here. So thank you.
Trustee Crossley.
I echo all the sentiments of my colleague, but I want to, my colleagues, but I want to say something to you directly. I'm going to watch you. You are destined for something great. You have totally impressed me thoroughly, and you are just going to do awesome things. Congratulations tonight. Keep it up. You're truly inspiring, and thank you.
And Trustee Schnicker.
Ms. Millie, you opened with a great Angela Davis quote, and you know, and really, you know, the quote talks about changing the things you can't accept, right? And you were really making, you're really being the change that we need in the world. And it's just, it's such a powerful presentation you gave us tonight. There's a couple of things that really, really resonated with me. Your points about where you're helping students to step outside their comfort zone and gain a deeper understanding of the issues their peers are facing today and throughout history. You packed so much in this presentation with so, so many wonderful concepts and ideas in a very small amount of time, and you went through it so powerfully. I mean, I've seen many presentations done over the years on equity and diversity in schools. And I've seen them locally. I've seen them regionally. I've seen them nationally, done at some of the highest institutions, learning in the nation. And I don't know that I've ever seen anyone more powerful than yours tonight. It really, really was really impressive in all the stuff that you touched on in a very short period of time. Your bullet on tolerance, I think, should be in everyone's presentation that basically presents on this, on equity in our schools. I think it's just, just so powerful. I really want to thank you for bringing it to us tonight. I encourage you to keep going forward with this work. I'm thrilled to know that you're a junior and you're not a senior and going off into the world yet because we get the benefit of another year of all your efforts. And just encourage you to keep pushing and doing what you're doing. It is probably the most important things, I think, work we have to do in the school district. And it's, it's so refreshing to know that you and your peers, and I can't, you know, it really lightened me even though it was more powerful than your presentation that tonight. You said there were 17 students in the club, and I was kind of blown away just by that number. And, you know, of course, we always want the numbers to be bigger, but what a great, great start for the club and for all your efforts. So thank you. Keep up the wonderful work, and we look forward to seeing so much more that you're going to bring to us.
Thank you, Trustee Schnicker. All right, and you know, Principal Hancock, for, you know, you know, knowing that this club needed to be and, you know, helping to collaborate and to form this club. And this just, you know, as my colleagues have said, just works, you know, with all the work that we're doing. And, and to have this as a student voice, which is, you know, we all know is key to all the work. And, and as everybody was talking, I was thinking about all the, the students in the middle school and the elementary levels, and just to know as they're going through our schools, just that it is, it will be, and it is, there is this space for them. And, you know, and maybe a, you know, club back, you know, down in the middle school and so forth. And just be infused through our, for, through our school and community, this open space for everybody. So thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sanchez, who I know has, would like to say a few words.
I think everything's been said, but it's worth repeating. Maya, this was an, I was saying, I actually counted how many slides you had. It was three slides. I'm not going to count your cover page and your, your thank you page, but my point being is that you impressed everyone with so few words, but your message was very, very strong. And this happened organically. It wasn't a planned event, you know, and these are the things that happen in life. You know, it was, is part of our superintendent's advisory, and we started talking, and eventually we just led to a conversation where we said, well, why don't you come to the next board meeting? I think your response was really, and then here we are. And my only regret is that you weren't here sooner. So to share your story. And I echo everything. You're a pioneer. You're a leader. And I thank you for everything you're doing and your influence with your colleagues. And, you know, as it relates to Austining High School, you're making it, you know, little by little, we're making it better for the next generation as well, the current and future students that are coming to OHS. And just thank you to the staff, you know, Mr. Hancock and everyone that provides you the space to be able to do that, which is critical. And that's not, you know, a common, you know, we can't take that for granted. And I think that's really, really important. So thank you again for being here. And I saw at the end, you put your contact information. I wouldn't be surprised if people start reaching out to you instantaneously. So whether that's on Instagram, no pun intended, or the other, you know, social media platforms you've provided. So I wish you all the best, and thank you for being here tonight and for the time you put into the presentation.
Thank you so much.
A great evening and.
You're welcome to stay and watch, but we're going to let you go. All right. Enjoy the rest of your day. Take care.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maya. Okay. Wow, just, I'm still enjoying and processing how wonderful that is and how wonderful this club is. And just a plug for JSA and what, what are kids as they go on field trips and they go to conferences and they hear other people that inspire them and they do something. It's just, just amazing. So great, great presentation. Now we're moving into the, pulling up the agenda, the low enrollment. Dr. Sanchez, if you can help me out, trying to find my, oh, here's my agenda right here. Austining High School, low enrolled class. Sorry, not low enrollment, low enrolled classes. So not to confuse anybody. All right. So should I hand it over to, I'll hand it over to you, Dr. Sanchez?
Yeah. So I'll just do a quick intro. First of all, I just, it's hard to follow that, Mr. Hancock. So good luck. But traditionally, and by board policy, if Mr. Hancock comes to the Board of Education to share where classes might be low enrolled to get either approval to continuum, i.e. a green light, or he may make some other recommendations to maybe not offer the course. So he's, he's here to provide an update, and then we'll engage in a discussion with the Board of Education. But thank you to Dr. DeSantia Lopez, who's instrumental in working with our guidance department. And obviously, Mr. Hancock as well for being here to talk about the courses. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hancock and Dr. Lopez.
All right. Thank you so much, everybody. That is a very tough act to follow. But I do have to say, you know, part of the prides that I included in tonight's presentation is the fact that we have this club, and already Maya and I have been talking about potential clubs. And already, Maya and I have been talking about potential clubs that we will probably be proposing potentially in the fall for the following school year. So they've already got some planning underway and some courses that they potentially may want to develop or enhance some of the existing. And I think that, again, speaks to just, again, that student-centered environment across the board that we continue to establish here at OHS. And I think, too, this low-enroll presentation is gonna end a little differently than it has in the past, I'm not gonna ruin that part of it. I'll go through the presentation and then wrap it up, I think, a little differently than what we've done in the last couple of years since I've been here. So let me just share my screen, oh, Dr. Arm, thank you.
Should be good.
Okay. I am. Okay, so just an overview for this evening, you know, we're gonna just review, just to remind everybody about the scheduling process. Also, the prouds, you know, one of the things that over the last three years of doing this presentation, kind of low enrolled always seems a little doom and gloomy. So, you know, part of what we also do is capture the positives of this year's scheduling process and what we're proud of, and some of the accomplishments that we've been able to meet. Then we'll discuss low-enroll courses and any questions or comments. So the scheduling process, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Lopez to walk us through and just remind everybody how we get from point A to point B of the course request for the following school year.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Hancock, so the scheduling process actually started with the teachers. In each department, they were asked to review and promote the various courses being offered to students. The programs of study was released in February upon a revision of the courses that were being offered. And then we began scheduling in March, going through the end of April. The counselors themselves started reaching out to students by grade levels and meeting with students individually to go over the transcripts, both what classes were required for them to take, as well as making some decisions around their electives and what they would like to take the following year. Going on to the next slide. We continued with the scheduling virtually with the freshmen, and I will be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Antonio Godino, the eighth grade counselor for AMD, along with Dr. Dulce Barker, and the technology help that is always incurred by Ms. Lori Malomo, as well as Mr. Mycanna. Because we did do a couple of things differently this year with our freshman scheduling, which I'll go to in a few, in the next slide. So those meetings were held virtually, we started with apparent orientation on March 22nd, going over the the agenda and what was necessary for credits at the high school. Along with the process of the freshman scheduling. We also started front-loading specific courses, so for example, health and gym and those required courses that all freshmen need to take anyway, were front-loaded ahead of time. When we started the virtual meetings with eighth graders, they were scheduled by the houses held in the social studies classes beginning April 5th. And that took about a two-week span moving forward, they were scheduled during those specific classes. And during that time, the students were also engaged in a survey where they were able to select the global studies courses that would be, they would be in, as well as their language and specific ninth-grade electives. Of course, some changes are still being made specifically for students who are going through the CSE process right now. ENL students and our avid students who were just added to the courses. So there's some specific changes that are still being made right now. Going on to the next slide, in terms of the communication for our families, we have oblasted the dates for the scheduling for our families. We also informed the students of their scheduling meetings, that was done by the counselors through their Google classrooms. Some counselors also had the scheduling appointment slots where students could also schedule their own slots depending on their openings in their schedule. We oblasted the link of our programs of study as well for parents and students to have accessible, and that is still on our department website. And we also have it available, obviously, to all our students. During the scheduling process, we also talked about the program of study itself, as, along with the prerequisites that were necessary for particular courses. And now I'll turn it back over to Mr. Hancock.
You're muted.
Sorry about that, but I had a mute, okay. So going over our prouds for this year and highlighting some of the great things that came out through the scheduling process. First, as I know, early in the fall, with the script, and we asked students, we surveyed students as to the types of courses that they would want to see here at the high school, and in some cases, we enhanced some of the curriculum we already have and courses we have. And in other cases, we proposed new courses in December. So again, that was the first time we had initiated that. We established, as you heard from Maya tonight, you know, curriculum club that going forward will help accomplish what we did in a small way this fall in terms of what types of courses students want to see going forward here at the high school. Also, the eighth into ninth graders, so our current eighth graders, receive logins for Infinite Campus. Historically, we hadn't done that, this year, we felt that it was important that, early on, you know, as soon as they, you know, get to schedule with us, that they should become freshman, incoming freshmen should become familiar with Infinite Campus and the scheduling process. So we gave them their own Infinite Campus logs in, so that they can make their course requests. And also, the fact that, you know, with the support of the board, that we were able to offer, hopefully, a potential dance program here at the high school. A couple of other prouds is, you know, when you survey students and ask them what do they want? You anticipate that when you open up the course, there's a number of students that are gonna apply, and this is no different than some of the new courses we propose. So if you remember, these courses were proposed to you in December and given the green light, and those were the current enrollments, these are the current enrollments. I think they actually went up slightly last time I checked late this afternoon. But as you see, students are interested in these courses. So we're already moving in the right trajectory and direction for the courses that we proposed in December from that survey in the fall. Also, based on that survey, is we had offered, in some cases, certain courses historically. And as you know, there's times that we may, on a night like tonight, say and request from the board that we're probably gonna close certain courses just because of low enrollment. And then later on, some years down the road, there's times where we may reopen them. And these are the courses right now that we are looking to reopen for next school year. So AP Stats, so two of them specifically, math and SUNY College Algebra, college algebra and functions, international law. And then a series of SUNY classes specific to studying cultures, backgrounds, equity, that we will be reopening again for this upcoming school year. So low-enroll courses, as per board policy, I'm highly highlighting any course that is of this afternoon are under-enrolled, being under twenty students. So that's what we consider low-enroll course. So as you know, just as a reminder, there's planned low-enroll courses, right, just based on students, for example, IAPs and 504s, based on our ENL support classes, reading support, these are courses that we typically run at a lower numbers. And students that need much more targeted support, so we do run them under twenty students, and these are typical each year. In terms of low enrollment, but we anticipate to increase. So there's a number of courses, some of them are surprise, and there's some of them on this list that you might be surprised by. And I think that I prefaced this slide with, given the pandemic year that we've been undergoing, our recruitment and ability to really get to wide, a wide audience of students has been a little challenging, because some of these courses, like Gimme the Mic or History Through Art, Unified PE are usually well over twenty, we usually have multiple sections of them. So we kind of are attributing the decline right now where we are to just not getting to enough students with enough time. So I do anticipate, and so do the teachers of these courses, that fees will go up. And I gave you on this slide just what the current, what this year's enrollment is, just to put it in perspective. And this is typical of what these courses usually have in them. So that's why I just wanna, I'm confident that these courses in particular are going to increase in enrollment between now and June. As Dr. Lopez mentioned, we're still making tweaks to students' schedules. In particular, I've spoken with the counselors and the teachers for some of these courses to try to promote between now and June, students to sign up for these elective courses in order to get that enrollment up. The two courses at the bottom are new courses that were, not new courses, courses that were reopening. And one of the conversations we've been having is looking at the curriculum from SUNY Albany, potentially combining the course Crossing Borders and Latino Aquia. In order to make it one complete course, or we would, we're making a complete course, there might be a fall semester for part of it, and then a spring semester for the second part of it, but it would be just one credit for the entire year. So even though there might be low enrolled, there are plans to increase enrollment for these particular courses. The next one is with regards to just a few more that are specifically language-related. So Spanish for the native speaker, again, typically at this time of year, it is low enrolled, but as we welcome more Spanish-speaking students from other countries, that does increase enrollment. This year was only sixteen typically, in a non-COVID year, we have upwards of twenty-five or more students. So this is, sixteen is not even really the most accurate number that we typically would have. College Italian four and five, typically, there's been years where we combined them into one course, depending on the enrollment. This year, we have them as two separate courses with twenty students each, so each year it kind of fluctuates. So next year, it might be a course that we go back and combine once again to make a college-level Italian four and five versus two separate courses. And then ASL three, as we continue, you know, I'm very thankful for Ms. Nicholas and joining our team this year. I think we're gonna see just overall a transition and transformation of ASL, and next year, probably not even see it on low enrolled at this point in the year. And then these are just some of our, in terms of cultural arts, that we see for various reasons, everything from chorus and orchestras, they don't have necessarily all the freshmen scheduled in there. Media production, Yearbook Wizard, also are typically courses that might be low enrolled now, but then by the time scheduling is set and done before the summer, they're already at twenty or more students. Theater Lab, you know, Ms. Vito was just talking to that tonight about the great show that our community is gonna see later on this week, and the amount of work put into the show. And usually, the Theater Lab is the cast and crew of the shows, the play and the musical that we put on in the spring. So if students enroll and become interested in that, those numbers go up as well. And then these courses are new courses that we proposed in December as well, that are low right now. But again, similar to what I described before with those other courses that typically have higher enrollment. Part of this is just exposure and making sure students know that we're offering these. One of the things, as you know, that we learned from the survey was sometimes students recommended or asked for things that we already do actually offer. So we're just working in the next, you know, few weeks to really promote these specific courses to gain interest. Because again, we knew from the survey that it's there, it's just getting students to understand sometimes what these courses might be and what they're for. You know, Intro to Education Prep, we're really excited about, they even put together a little introductory video that we've sent out. And there's times where new courses, as you know, historically may start off low enrolled, and then next year, you won't even see them on the low-enroll list. Sometimes it just takes the first year for the students to hear about it, see friends in it, and then all of a sudden, they're like, oh yeah, I want to take that. So this, we again do anticipate it going up as well. And dance, you know, we've begun to promote, but it was a kind of late addition to the game to scheduling. So, you know, I think once more students know that this is official, we'll definitely see that number increase as well. So unlike other years, I'm actually not formally presenting any courses to close next year. And I think that that speaks to us really aligning to what students are interested in. And looking at the course requests I provided you tonight with a listing of the courses that are low enrolled, but what our plan is to increase enrollment with the said courses, or the ones that we know just historically are low enrolled for IAP 504 or ENL students. So I'm not at this time proposing that we close any of our courses for next year, but really just seek your approval to run, continue to run the ones that right now appear to be low enrolled, but I anticipate will go up in enrollment between now and June.
Thank you, Principal Hancock, and thank you to everybody on the panel screen here for this input and in these courses. Did we get approval for the dance course to also double as a physical education credit? Because I know that certainly would help.
It depends upon the certification of the employee, but we do have a few duly certified in the pool.
Okay, great, that would be great, I'm sure that'll.
No, that's our, that's a hundred percent our goal, and yeah, there's a couple of people in the pool that Mr. Morrison and I have already talked about. So yeah, that's, fingers crossed, that's the goal.
You might have to open up many classes once everybody hears that, we have a lot of dancers in our high school. Is there any opportunity to open up these classes, are any of these courses not available to the younger classmen? Or, you know, is it, are these, all these courses, except for some of the SUNY ones, are they available to all of the high schoolers?
Yes, so the majority of our courses over the last couple of years, we've really shifted away from it being mostly eleven to twelve, because historically, a lot of the new courses that we would offer were focused on eleventh and twelfth graders. And we've made a concerted effort with staff to really go down ninth through twelfth, because we were seeing that ninth grade especially had very few selected electives, and we've really increased that. So a lot of the courses that you see here are either ninth through twelfth or tenth to the twelfth. The SUNY ones are usually typically sometimes eleventh and twelfth mostly, but all the others welcome ninth graders as well.
Great, all right, great, now definitely a green light for me to, I know you're looking for the green light from all of us, so definitely a green light for me. And I'll open it up to my other colleagues. Trustee, oh, I have some, we have thumbs up. Trustee Banta.
So I like the fact that there's a more concerted effort to kind of bridge that transition from eighth to ninth grade, that's definitely great. And the course list is definitely so robust, so I can see why you have such confidence that the enrollment will increase. You might have said it already, but what is the minimum enrollment before the class is deemed closed?
So typically, you know, any course low enroll, our board policy is twenty, you know, twenty students or less. Last couple of years, you know, courses that, you know, I saw year after year running at like ten, thirteen, would be ones that I would highlight for the board and say I would recommend closing these. And that's why I'm saying this year, for the first time at least since I've been in this seat, we're not proposing that. Because for the most part, we're confident, as you said, in these courses, so there's nothing that I feel like we need to propose closing at this point.
Okay, so, so if that were to happen, if something ended up not meeting the minimum threshold, I saw that there were two other courses that you put that you were thinking of combining, I don't know if the basis was the enrollment numbers or just the overlap in the, in what they're offering. But do, what steps, or have you considered what steps you can take if you have to cancel a course that did have some students enrolled, but just not the minimum threshold? To kind of like find something to pique their interest in that area, or just, you know, so they're not kind of like left out there hanging? Like, I was really looking forward to this, and now it's not gonna happen, what do I do with this time and my schedule now? Like, so is there like a, kind of like a support, like a rap, so people could just like come back and kind of ask questions about what else can be offered? Or even combining classes like you, that might be similar, like you were, like you had on the slide earlier, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I'm glad, you know, you asked that, so to the courses that, the SUNY Crossing Borders and the SUNY Latino Aquia. Those courses, looking at the curriculum, you know, again, in problem solving with staff, felt like that's probably a course that we could combine into a year, because each of them separately is really a half year. So if we were to combine the two just in front, even enrollment purposes, those fifteen students now will get, you know, the course that they would want. those fifteen students now will get, you know, the course that they would want and potentially additional. Right? So that's kind of our plan B if the enrollment for the courses separately doesn't go up. Historically, we really work with, i- if students are, if we have to close a course, like let's say there's ten students. Typically, I would have, I would ask the counselors to meet with the students. And there's been cases a couple of years ago, I think it was AP Computer Science, was on the docket to potentially not run because the enrollment was really struggling. The students that had signed up took it upon themselves to get friends to sign up like they did a concerted effort and they got, they got their peers and we ran the course, right? So we don't ever just take it off the table. You know, usually we'll give the teacher who typically teaches the course a heads up, the counselors, and then the students are older that course that, hey, there's a potential here. And between the three, we usually get the enrollment, you know, up. So I, I'm, we definitely look to see what's the best solution. We won't just close it just to close it. Because to your point, those, whether it's five students, eight students, there's eight that are interested. So, you know, we either, if we have to close it, we'll guide them to something else and work with them to fill that. Or in some cases, like I said, they take it upon themselves and they'll get more people into the course, more their friends.
Good to know. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Banta. Any my other colleagues? I know a lot of us gave you the thumbs up. Anybody else? Looks like you have the thumbs up.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Great. I don't know if anybody wants us, I'm sorry, Trustee Schnucker, I saw that you unmuted for a second.
I mean, it looks like a great catalog of courses and I commend you for all the efforts in getting the student input. I think it's really, really important, you know. And certainly appreciate yours and Ms. Lopez's efforts to really kind of make sure we connect students with the classes. I, I would just ask kind of what my colleague, you know, brought up, which is if we, we end up closing courses, you know, you know, I don't know the board's been notified about that in the past, but it would be interesting for us to know kind of what we couldn't get into the, the schedule. You know, what the numbers were just from, you know, from a board, you know, closing the loop. I think it would be good for us to know that.
Thank you, Trustee Schnucker. All right, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sanchez.
I just want to thank the board, Mr. Hancock, Dr. Lopez and the Counseling Department, as well as the entire staff at OHS and for the board support of the courses that we're able to offer. And I think we've seen a significant evolution over time. So, you know, more to come and we'll provide you updates if anything should change. But thank you for the time tonight and thank you again to our two building leaders for their presentation tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're moving along. We will now go into the business of the board. Does someone want to share the agenda? Ms. Reese, do you have the agenda to share? Or do you need me to do that?
I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'll, I just make, I just want to make sure I can make it big enough. Let's see.
Ms. Rodley, I'm, I'm gonna bring in Marcela Levin while we're, the board takes action and, or considers taking action on some of these items. She's gonna share as we traditionally. Just an update from Project Alcanse, but we will have the board take action and then if we can provide some time at the end.
Okay, great. And I thought there was also somebody else too.
Claudia Santiago is here as well.
Yeah, thank you. Yep.
Okay, so we'll go, we'll go with the, the agenda first. Okay, with the action. All right, let me just. One second. Okay. Can everybody see my screen? Okay. Bear with me one second. I want to make sure I can scroll down. Okay. We have a lot open here. Okay, I'd like to take a motion to vote on resolutions four point one through four point one zero.
So moved.
Second.
Four point one, resolution to appoint additional consultants for the 2020, 2021 school year. Resolution to approve a settlement agreement and general release. Four point three, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April fifth, 2021. Four point four, resolution to approve the minutes of special meeting of April seventh, 2021. Four point six, sorry, four point five, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April fourteenth, 2021. Four point six, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April fifteenth, 2021. Four point seven, resolution to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April twentieth, 2021. Four point eight, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April twenty-sixth, 2021. Four point nine, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April twenty-eighth, 2021. And four point one, resolution regarding a memorandum of understanding with Open Door Family Medical Center. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. I'd like to take a motion to vote on five point one.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Five point one, resolution to approve recommended placements. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. I'd like to take a motion to vote on six point one.
So moved.
Second.
Six point one, resolution regarding inter-fund transfers. Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Sorry. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. One second. Like to take a motion to vote on resolution seven point one through seven point one zero.
So moved.
Second.
Seven point one, resolution regarding civil service staff resignations. Seven point two, resolution regarding professional staff appointments. Seven point three, resolution regarding civil service staff appointment. Seven point four, resolution regarding support staff appointments. Seven point five, resolution regarding professional staff appointments before and after school programs. Seven point six, resolution regarding support staff appointments before and after school programs. Seven point seven, resolution regarding professional staff appointments, summer school programs. Seven point eight, resolution regarding support staff appointments, summer school programs. Seven point nine, resolution regarding per diem substitute removals. And seven point one zero, resolution regarding per diem substitute appointments. Any comments or questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Now we're moving into audience recognition. Okay, Ms. Reese, if you would. If there's anybody that has any comments or questions, please just raise your digital hand. I know that we are bringing in Ms. Santiago. And is Ms. Levin with us as well? Okay, great.
They're both there as well.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Levin and Ms. Santiago. Please go ahead and unmute your mic and share your camera and share where you're from and, and what your comments are tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I am going to introduce another Project Alcanse member. Her name is Claudia Santiago. She's a parent of a couple of students in our district. And so she's going to do our statement this year in English and I will do it in Spanish for the rest of our Latinx community. Go ahead, Claudia.
Good evening, Dr. Sanchez, President of the School Board, Ms. Rodley, School Board members and the school district community. Project Alcanse is a district Latino parent advocacy group that has its roots in the early campaign to establish full day kindergarten in the Ossetian schools and in addressing educational social issues related to the needs of our newly arrived immigrant families and the Ossetian Latino community in general. We have always been supportive of our school district efforts on behalf of all children and have historically informed the community of the importance of understanding and participating in school board meetings, the school district budget process and the election of school board trustees. Understanding that many of our families are still not eligible to vote because of the citizenship requirement, we have continuously engaged in a symbolic vote on the school budget, the results of which we have always presented to the board at these meetings. This has been done to demonstrate our commitment to engaging in the process while also encouraging those who are citizens to vote on the designated date. Unfortunately, due to the present pandemic, we were unable to collect signatures as we've done every past year since we started. We do want to state that we celebrate the gains that our district has made with the support of our entire Ossetian community over the years and that our commitment to our children and families will continue to be strong no matter what obstacles we face. Ossetian has benefited from an involved community and parents, strong leadership, great educators and staff and a shared commitment to the wellbeing of all our children. Thank you, Project Alcanse committee members.
Dr. Sanchez, Ms. Lisa Rodley, presidenta de la junta escolar, miembros de la junta escolar y la comunidad del distrito escolar. Proyecto alcance es un grupo que siempre ha abogado por los padres latinos del distrito que tiene sus raíces en la campaña inicial para establecer jardín de infancia, kindergarten de día completo en las escuelas de Ossetia y abordar problemas educativos y sociales relacionados con las necesidades de nuestras familias inmigrantes recién llegadas y la comunidad latina de Ossetia en general. Siempre hemos apoyado los esfuerzos de nuestro distrito escolar en nombre de todos los niños. Históricamente hemos informado a la comunidad de la importancia de aprender y participar en las reuniones de la junta escolar, el proceso de establecer el presupuesto del distrito escolar y la elección de los miembros de la junta escolar. Entendiendo que muchas de nuestras familias todavía no son elegibles para votar debido al requisito de ciudadanía, hemos participado continuamente en un voto simbólico sobre el presupuesto escolar cuyos resultados siempre hemos presentado a la junta en estas reuniones. Esto se ha hecho para demostrar nuestro compromiso de participar en el proceso al mismo tiempo que alentamos a aquellos que ya son ciudadanos a votar en el día designado. Desafortunadamente, debido a la pandemia actual no pudimos recolectar firmas como lo hemos hecho todos los años desde que comenzamos. Queremos afirmar que celebramos los logros de nuestro distrito que ha logrado con el apoyo de toda nuestra comunidad de Ossetia a lo largo de los años y que nuestro compromiso con nuestros niños y familias seguirá siendo fuerte sin importar los obstáculos que enfrentemos. Ossetia se ha beneficiado de una comunidad y padres involucrados, un liderazgo sólido, excelentes educadores y personal y un compromiso compartido con todos en general para el bienestar de todos nuestros niños. Muchas gracias. Esto fue un pequeño, un pequeño testimonio del comité de proyecto alcance. So I promise you that what I read in Spanish is exactly what Claudia read in English. And we just are very thankful that you gave us the opportunity to be present. Though we were cautious, that is a little bit of uncertainty at this time still. And we didn't want to put anybody at risk. And we're still developing some sort of connections online. But we, we still need some time to, to achieve where we want to get.
I want to thank both you, Ms. Levin and Ms. Santiago for this, you know, for your words and for your symbolic vote and for sharing this each year. It's impactful and it's meaningful. We're one community and it's really important that every year during this time that we do our votes and all throughout the year and all your support you, you've given to the entire community, that you come and you speak to us and, and share that for the public. And just really grateful for your work and for your countless hours of helping families, students and everybody in the community. And, you know, throughout COVID and the global, you know, this global pandemic, when our communities are in need the most, groups, Project Alcanse and other groups have really stood up and taken care of our community. So from the bottom of my heart and from our board, we thank you so much for all your work and all your efforts. And thank you for being here tonight.
Gracias.
Gracias. Thank you.
So before we go, I just want to thank Ms. Santiago for being here and Marcela for your leadership as well, for both your leadership and for sharing the words that you did here tonight. It's obviously from what Ms. Rodley said, we're very much, you know, we very much appreciate the time you took to, to be here tonight. I'd be remiss, Marcela, do you have any news for the board? We can't hear you, Marcela. Do you have any news for the board?
I, I have, I, as you all know, I became a social worker in 2016 and I finished my master in 2018. And then I got my certification for the school social worker. So this year I said that I will start taking my life back. So I'm, I'm, I'm taking care of my health, mind and body. And I also started putting my resume together, looking for a social work, school social work position.
So where are you going? Where are you going?
So I applied to different places, but I got an offer.
It doesn't matter. Where, where are you going?
I got an offer for the Ossetia School District this morning, so I'm gonna go to Brookside.
That'll be a very proud resolution to pass for our board.
But I, I'm gonna get ahead of the board and we're just very thankful for, you know, Marcela's work. We all know how much of an impact she just not only has, I mean, just across the community. So, yeah, it was a long audition. As Dr. Alm said, I'm muted over here. So we're very, very thankful. So that'll be an item that we'll share with the board on the June ninth.
I believe so, yes.
Exciting night for everybody, including Marcela and her family. So congratulations in advance, Marcela.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna take a risk and say that'll probably be unanimous vote without a doubt.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Wow. Excellent. 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 Great news. Thank you. Thank you, Marcela and Claudia, and thank you for joining us tonight again and have a wonderful evening. Okay. Now we are moving into board committee and liaison reports and board dialogue. Sorry, didn't mean to do that. So open it up to my colleagues to report out on any committees that may have met since we met last, last Tuesday and any other board dialogue that anybody else would like to have. So everybody knows if they unmute your mic, just go ahead and feel free to share. I know we had a, a teacher education meeting, I believe. I missed, I was unable to attend that meeting. So if any of my colleagues were able to make that meeting, feel free to share. I don't think we had talked about the policy meetings. That was the only other committee meeting that I know, committee that was meeting.
I wasn't able to attend either, Lisa.
Okay. All right, great. We'll give you an update. Trustee Banta, I think it was a difficult week. So we'll give an update. We'll get the update from the committee. We've all been actually in attendance every meeting, so it's been really good. So we'll, we'll give everybody an update in our June meeting. All right, so anybody else have anything else to share? All right, so anybody else have anything else to share? Okay. All right, I just want to remind everybody, you have about nineteen more minutes to get to the polls. If you haven't, please do so to vote on the school budget, the library budget, the church purchase proposition and all the candidates for both the Austin School Board and the Austin Library Boards. And with that, if there's not anything else, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of May eighteenth, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Have a great night, everybody, and thank you to those who are able to join us and those who watch us in the future. And have a, have a very nice evening.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.